During this short, but good evening. It is 5 p.m. on April 5th and I'd like to call the meeting of the town council in the morning. Please take a moment of silence, we've got all those complaints have been dramatically impacted from the adverse consequences caused by the situation. According to Mass General Law tonight, if you not know, if you're recording, I would ask anyone who's not recording, please identify yourself.
Yeah, you're, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm not really picking up your voice. I kind of know what you're saying because of the history. And also, I'm just monitoring Facebook and we're not on Facebook, FYI.
Yep, working on it.
I can repeat that and maybe it'll be a little clearer. I'll try to be a little closer to the lights, but according to Mass General Law tonight, you're seeing audio and video recorded. Now, I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, if you could please identify yourself. And I'm guessing no one's recording. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, pursuit of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order to suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
Better now. Better than it was.
I might, if the sun goes down and the light becomes worse, I might start moving around different sections of the house, so I haven't had a lot of luck with that.
That actually, that actually was better. You raised your voice and leaned a little and that came in better.
I'll try to talk a little louder, maybe that helps. I believe it's a bad microphone, it's all PC related, but anyway, tonight's, you know, our agenda, we have two agenda items. And the first one is the town's presentation of a proposed operating budget for our fiscal year 2023. And that's for Article 6, Section 1 of the Charter, and Mary obviously presents that. I think you all know that there are many components missing, but Mary will explain that. But for the Charter, to meet the obligations and be, you know, formalized with, that's what we're here to do for the community. So, Mary, I'm ready when you are.
Thank you, Mike. Well, as President Kane indicated, tonight's the draft presentation. And, you know, unfortunately, it's more of a pro forma presentation because the Charter requires the draft be submitted to you April 1st. And this is our first meeting subsequent to that date. But there are so many undetermined parts on the revenue side of the budget that, that's why I wrote in my manager's report, I'm filing it with you, but with a cautionary tale that I don't want you to really rely on anything that's in the revenue side. And I don't want you to get disturbed when you see the potential tax rate on the last page. Because that is largely due to the fact that there are, that all the capital projects that I have an opinion on financing are included. And they filter through the form and are added to the tax rate because they're considered part of the general fund when they're presented in this manner. So with those caveats to start with, this year's budget essentially reflects the necessary additions to staffing, which I identified as, as the result of the town's experience during and throughout the pandemic. You know, fortunately, the negative consequences that, the worst consequences that we feared through fiscal 20 and 21 were not realized. And in large measure, that was due to the infusion of COVID funds and other government-related grant opportunities that we were able to take advantage of. Many departments, however, worked without a full complement of staff now going on two years. And from my seat, I think it's imperative that the positions that they're asking for be seriously considered and hopefully funded in your review of this budget. And before I forget, I just want to say to Steve and Olga Bonus in particular, as well as everybody else in the finance office and the department heads and staff, the effort that everybody put in in preparing their operational budgets and offering supporting narratives where new positions are being sought. And so I, I want to thank them for the effort and the attention to detail that they put into their requests for appropriations. I'm also grateful to the members of the Capitol Advisory Committee. Ryan Quinby chaired it again. And we had several, two counselors, Connor O'Shea and Ralph Page participated in that, as well as Jim Broderick and Rich Foschero, Steve Lonergan and myself. And those people spent an awful lot of time evaluating over $7 million of projects that were submitted for consideration. And they're included in the budget as we'll get to later. So this draft on the revenue side is basically is based on Governor Baker's budget, which was prepared and offered in January of '22. The legislature is still working on its version of the budget and I'm getting an echo. And hopefully they'll pass that before the draft, before the final budget is submitted to you in the, by the 1st of May. However, we're also estimating $500,000 in new growth. And that's a speculative number, which I think will go up based on building permits and property sales over the last year in town. And of course, we've built in the two and a half percentage increase, which amounts to approximately $1,000,001 in additional revenue that we can count on through the tax levy. Steve has estimated conservatively on the meals tax and motor vehicle excise tax. And they're not based on a full year's experience, so all of the revenue side we feel will go up. And you should know that the Mass Municipal Organization is lobbying very hard for the legislature to increase the local aid. Governor Baker's budget called for 2.7% revenue sharing. And the MMA is arguing for 7.3% based in large part because of the Commonwealth had an excess of tax collections in the last fiscal year. And their argument is revenue sharing should actually be shared instead of just formulaic, as it's been for many, many years. So the, onto the operational side, several of the budgets that contain percentage increases are based on those, in some cases, based on the new positions that are being sought. Those are in finance, HR, treasurer collector, recreation and fire department. Some of those increases are perhaps a bit higher than you might think, but that's because we just recently settled two of the three labor contracts, going back to a period that started June or July 1 of 2020. So over the last 18 months, now 19 months maybe, step increases in the retroactive COLAs, which were 2% in each of those years, are built in and therefore the budget for fiscal '23 incorporates those higher salaries for our well-deserving staff. And obviously, the detail of each department budget is in your package if you haven't yet had the opportunity to take a look at it. And any supplemental material that I have or that Steve has obviously will make available to you. I had previously distributed to the council the narratives of each department. I had solicited, when I, when I didn't think I was going to be here to prepare this budget, I had asked the department heads to submit to me what their top three priorities were for purposes of assisting the new town manager and understanding where the needs were in the departments. So that document was given to you probably eight, maybe eight weeks ago. And if you don't have access to it, I could certainly supply it again. The, the other key thing that's in the draft budget is an effort that we're going to make to try to continue to improve the administrative operations. This year, we were able to successfully move to a, what we're calling a decentralized payroll. In the past, it used to be that everybody would fill out an Excel spreadsheet and then turn, turn that into payroll. And then payroll would have to go through every line item and upload the information. So now we've eliminated the paper and all of those payrolls are submitted through Munis electronically. And I think that's, that's been a vast improvement. And we're trying to continue to make other improvements of a like nature. Our budget busters continue to be health insurance, our OPEB liability contributions, our retirement contributions. We did get a little bit of a break on workers' comp this year based on some training and a reduced number of accidents. And, but that was offset by the 7% increase in the, the health insurance premiums. So those, those third-party costs, we feel sort of are out of our control. We have to pay those bills. What I would like to do, just as an aside, is ask the committee at the Scantic Valley to do a consultation to see if there's an opportunity to perhaps opt into GIC as opposed to Tufts and Health New England, just to see if there's any cost control that might be available through that. I know it's been a topic of concern of mine, as well as the councils for probably many years. The school budget, excuse me, is included as, as it was given to us. As you know, under the Charter, that's, that's our marching orders that we just passed through, the school budget. And tomorrow, we plan on giving the same package that you received to the Finance Oversight Committee, so they can start looking at things. Overall, it appears as of now that the operating budget is going up 5.78%. However, revenues, even as I described them, are up 4.89%. So I think we will have a larger budget this year. Again, I think that's of necessity. And the last takeaway I want you to have from, at least from my remarks here are, we included almost $3 million of capital projects. There, I don't know what page it's on, one of 18, but it's in the, it's towards the end of that package. And I had also sent a communication to you maybe two or three weeks ago on that subject as well, indicating that my draft budget is recommending that all of the projects that were categorized as either category A or B were recommended for funding by the Capitol Committee. Because they're on this formula, they flow through, as I said earlier, to a potential tax rate that's a bit misleading. Because my recommendation for funding of those, which you may or may not accept, is that we use our incoming ARPA money, which is approximately $2.4 million. And a sum amount from the free cash to fund in full the 2.9, 2,931,000 of capital projects that are in that A and B category. You know, through your deliberations or through the Finance Oversight review of this, if, if there's some sense that they don't think that's wise or want to just limit the capital spending to something less, obviously, that's, that's your decision to make. But I think the town is in a position this year, and perhaps unlike any other year, where that infusion of cash through the ARPA and the, the large amount of free cash that we have in excess of normal balances can fund all these projects. I think there's 18 in total, many of which will have a lifespan of 30, 40, 50 years in betterment of the community. And it'll be at no, not, no impact on the tax rate and no interest because there's no borrowing involved. And so overall, that's why I would like to fund them this way. Obviously, again, as I say, that's, that's your decision, so we can reflect that over the next, or think about that over the next month or so. So, whoops.
Mary?
I don't know what happened there, but I lost everyone for a minute.
We can hear you and we have to read and go back.
So capital was the last point I was going to make. And Ralph, I know you came in after I thanked everybody that was on the committee, but thank you again for what you did there. And we'll try to answer questions if you have any particular ones. But again, you know, there's the police department, one other thing I should add, that labor contract is up for a ratification vote on Friday of this week. And if the ratification vote is successful, then there'll be a dramatic change in the police department budget. And I also mentioned in my draft budget message that you don't have yet, that the fire department union contract is also expiring in June. And they want to start negotiations. I doubt very much I'll have it finished by the time of this fiscal '23 budget. But that's going to change their budget numbers as well. So there's just an awful lot of extraordinary moving parts this year. Last couple of years, we had to deal with COVID and the worries about that. And this year, there are other worries that are, I won't say as dramatic, but they will change the, the figures on this, on this budget by May for sure. So, so that's, that's my, those are my comments for the draft budget so far.
All right, thank you. We've covered the fourth, fifth or sixth budget that we've all had the opportunity to work with. And we know there's many moving parts this year. We're looking at the, the evaluation of properties and unknown meal stacks and how much the governor is going to actually spend this way. So very incomplete, but this is where it starts. And tonight, we're complying with the Charter, so we appreciate everything. And the Budget Finance Committee will obviously have a lot of heavy lifting to do. And I know I'll say most of my questions once they've had a chance to look at it and the revenue sources become more readily available. So thanks, Mary. The next order of business is the approval of the Town Council Code of Conduct.
Hey, Mike?
Yep, Ralph?
Before we do that, do you mind if I ask Mary a quick question with regards to the budget? Mary, I was looking under the, the list of, I don't know what to say, under town manager, the different jobs and all listed under it. And I didn't see the position that we had approved last year under you. Is it under a different person? Did that not work out? What, I'm just trying to get an overall feel. Or am I looking in the wrong spot?
No, no, you're not looking in the wrong spot. How do I want to, it's not on the town manager's proposed budget for fiscal '23. Back in December of '21, when I anticipated leaving the town. I didn't want to leave that person without any guidance. Because there, you know, whether it would be an acting position, an acting manager or a new manager that wouldn't necessarily know her or know any of the concepts that we had planned for her. So in an effort to keep her occupied, I moved her to the finance office. However, she continued to work, again, 18 hours a week, but on assignments that I gave her. But she moved into Steve's office because she could be of most beneficial use there and stay occupied. She did continue to, and she's not going to return for fiscal '23 anyway, due to some personal issues. She lives quite a distance from East Long Meadow and has small children, so that it's just not a, it's not a good. I mean, she was a great employee and accomplished a great, great deal, and I would love to have the position back. But the balance of my thinking on that was that by not including it in fiscal '23, that whoever the new manager is can make that choice for him or herself. Maybe they'd be more efficient than I was and be able to do the, do the work of the office without that assistant or deputy position. But that's why it's not there. She's showing, she's shown on the org chart under Steve's department, if you take a chance to look at that. And I believe her pay has been paid out of Steve's department since December or early January. So it's sort of an unfortunate consequence, but that's what happened there.
So if I'm reading it right, you still think that a position like that's necessary? I mean, like I said, when we first had talked about it, it was more to try and do grant writing and your special projects and all, to free up the town manager to do other stuff. It's still, is that, that is something that's worthwhile?
Oh, without a doubt, without a doubt. Just in the last two or three weeks, we've had so much going on in the manager's office. And I've been, I've been occupied with the collective bargaining negotiations almost exclusively for the last three or four months. And that's in large part because our HR director is fairly new and Steve had the budget on his plate. So, you know, if there were a little more stability, we would have a team in these negotiations and one person wouldn't have to be so immersed in it. But that was not the case, is not the case just yet. But we've had some unexpected resignations that have required the manager to be more present to certain departments than anticipated. And those are, and I've had several community activists, I'll say, reach out to me on certain issues that are very appealing and interesting and would require an enormous amount of research and work, but would be great for, but I just can't get to it. So all the things that I would love to get to, if I had that assistant position, would be great. But again, I just, I didn't want to presuppose what the next manager's feelings on that subject would be. And at 18 hours a week, I mean, you know, she, she was, but just the MGM grant and an IT grant that she worked on with Ryan. She, she made, I don't know, $30,000 over the fiscal year and brought into town almost 200. And that, and, and then did countless other things in addition to that. So I guess that's a long answer to a short question.
I just, I'd like to point out, I mean, to the whole council, I think the position's needed. The more money we can bring in with someone that can do grants, the better off the town is. Just a thought process, and that was one of the things I looked for, Mary, and thank you for your explanation. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. While we're here, does anyone else have any other questions for Mary relative to the budget before we move on to the code of conduct? Okay, I'm sure we'll have plenty of time with that. Like I said, once the Budget Finance Committee gets that, it's got a lot of heavy lifting to do and I'm sure we'll have numerous questions. But again, thank you, Mary. And Kathy, I know you've worked very hard and over many months, trying to put something together for us in reference to the Council Code of Conduct, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mike. I was, as you're saying that, I was trying to think back to how, just how long ago this topic of establishing a code of conduct for the council began. But it's, it's well in excess of a year. In, in trying to create a document that counselors could react to, I worked with our legal counsel, Jesse, and asked him to make sure that having a code of conduct was something that was within the purview of the council. And the answer is yes, it is. As well, I spent a fair amount of research time on the MMA site, looking at their best practices around having codes of conduct. And they offered, besides their general input on it, they offered a half a dozen codes of conduct from various towns and cities across the Commonwealth that could be held up as a good model to form the basis of some entities wanting to put a code of conduct together. Long story short, we brought the document to, or I brought the document to the council the first time around. And there wasn't a lot of traction or appetite perhaps at the time. So it kind of took a pause. And then when it came back to the council again, the, the pleasure of the council was to create a small subcommittee to look it over again and make sure that we sought appropriate input from our own colleagues here. And again, to dig maybe a little deeper on with the MMA on what kind of best practices would fit a town like East Long Meadow. Clearly, you know, you have cities in the Commonwealth and they may have codes of conduct. But given the size of the city, the size of the body itself, the, you know, the rules they hold themselves to wouldn't necessarily be a true fit for a smaller town such as East Long Meadow. But in the course of the subcommittee made up of Connor, Don and myself, we rehashed everything. We took the input from the council and we modified the document that was originally given. And what you have before you tonight in a, a format that shows you how we incorporated the input of our colleagues, as well as the strikeout where we cleaned up the, the language and either changed it or just kept it removed from future consideration. So all of that said, it's not a terribly long document. It's a page and a half. And it, it, it's got four basic parts, general conduct, interactions with community, interactions with the manager and interactions with each other. Again, it's a best practice of the Mass Municipal Association to, to the best of a town's ability to have some sort of guideline that kind of puts guardrails up for the difficult situations where there could be very spirited discussion and anger or emotion may play into the deliberations. And this way, there, there's some ground rules, kind of like when you're playing a board game, there's certain rules you play by to make the game productive and equitable for all. So that's my two cents on this document. And certainly, Don and Connor, if you have more to say, please do.
My comments were basically tweaking. I just was mindful of the present value of social media and how we all got to where we are with the new former government and so forth. And to have it curtailed moving forward and being interpreted as violating the code of conduct when somebody is legitimately speaking, just proper dissent or raising questions and being subject as a employee of the town under their rules, I thought was, was possibly, it could be restrictive and it could be controlling by the majority over the minority. So you can see a couple changes and also, and, and some of the generalities, I think it needed to be more honed in. And so you can see also, you know,
And so you can see also, you know, just some, just again, some tweaking. And that's, you'll see some of the red line comments and edits, I should say, in the draft you're looking at.
And Don? Anyone else have any other input regarding the document or Kathy or Don's comments? Ralph?
Mr. Chairman, oh, here we go. Audio's on. First of all, Kathy, Don, Connor, thank you for putting this together and spending many hours on it. I'm kind of a civil liberties guy here and a First Amendment guy from my background. And so when I read this, I kind of have huge concerns. I know it's been tweaked, but regarding the citizens, the counselors, and the town manager for open and honest discussion and communication here. I have concerns also as to the subjectivity of it and the fact that it's so broad and many interpretations can be made of it. And in today's world where listening seems to be gone by the wayside and communication, if you think what I think, it's okay, but if you don't, it's not okay. The listening skills are not always switched on and offenses can be made and taken in the wrong way. So I'm kind of saddened that the civil discourse and living by the golden rule is really not being adhered to in today's society. I also realize that political conversations can have really sharp meanings and sometimes are neither nice nor pretty. So, you know, as you mentioned, Kathy, the MMA has some great, great ideas. And with this, my thought is, why are we just limiting this? If we're going to do a code of conduct, why don't we do a code of conduct for all boards, all councils appointed and elected? That way, everybody will fall under the same purview. My thought is, could it be a bylaw? The attorneys know more than I do. But to me, this is worth not going back to the drawing board, but sitting back and having some discussion here to see if we can indeed just do one-stop shopping and do a code of conduct for the entire town.
Hey, Ralph, I saw your hand up earlier.
Thanks, Mike. So the first thing I'd like to point out is I think a lot of the stuff in this is obvious. You know what? Treat people with respect, be nice. You know, try and talk decent. That's really what it's saying. But what, what we don't have is really any teeth to enforce anything. The only thing we can do is publicly say we disagree with someone if they speak out or they say something wrong as an elected official. I mean, the citizens have the right to recall someone. But other than that, we're pretty limited on what we can do if someone goes rogue and every meeting is creating trouble. So, I mean, as long as we realize that, I think what the Code of Conduct is trying to say is, hey, let's be nice to each other. Let's be nice to employees and the manager, which we should be doing anyways. I do understand what Sid's saying. And I sort of agree. I think all of our boards should follow a code of conduct, whether elected or appointed. If we choose to make it a bylaw, I mean, I don't know what legal. I suppose we have every right to put it under the administration in the bylaw and just say, hey, all boards should act like this. It is something to think about, like I said, but I didn't, I didn't have anything negative to say about it. I thought it says what we should all be doing anyway. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I, again, this is not attacking the code of conduct. It's just, as Ralph said, we should be adhering to this anyway. We're all adults here. We're professionals. Misinformation can always get out and we just need to be professional in what we do for the taxpayers and the citizens of East Long Meadow.
Your point's well taken. I would agree. I think the document is well composed, but the point of interest that you brought up is that we're all acting under the same guidelines. So to extend this code of conduct to other appointed boards or committees, I would have to think that's a good idea to follow the same protocol that the town council is going to follow. Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. You know, we've, we're in this point because we didn't know how to behave previously. And so this code of conduct's been kicked around for a while. And I would suggest that we have fine tuned it. We have all submitted our information into this document and it's been studied by the subcommittee that as a council, we should move forward with our code of conduct, which would remind us all every time we review it with the council rules every year, that this is something that we need to be cognizant of. And at times, it's been forgotten. So I would suggest that we still move for a vote tonight for this particular document. And if there is interest in extending it to other boards and committees, absolutely. But I don't want this process to be lost in the process simply because all of a sudden now it needs to be much broader than originally planned. Thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions at this point?
Mike?
Connor?
Thank you. I would agree with Marilyn's sentiment there. I think it's a great start for us to act on this one. And if we choose to expand it, whether it's a bylaw or similar in the future, then that would be an additional good path forward. And I think part of it too was also because the town employees that all, of course, report to the manager, they already had an employee handbook. But as the council, we didn't have anything. And so this kind of level sets the same sort of expectations that we have for our employees to make sure that we're behaving appropriately as well.
Yeah?
To that, to tag on to Connor's remarks there. Yes, all of the employees have their, a specific code of handbook for their general handbook, but it speaks to behaviors. The school department has one or various iterations of handbook and codes of behavior for all of its various bargaining units and employees. So I would be biased in supporting our establishing a code of conduct and then to expand and see what, what can be done for the various boards and commissions that function under the manager and on the town's org chart. To something as simple as the Attorney General's Office is vigilant in every year making sure that there are quick webinars on conflict of interests and open meeting laws and that folks are encouraged to take part in them. We go through that routinely with our ethics training every two years, with our open meeting law training. And again, this is all quick, driven, computer-driven webinars. But there is nothing enforceable that I can see where we don't ask our boards and commissions to do the same thing. The opportunity is there for them, but there's no requirement to spend the hour on the computer, you know, after hours or even, I, well, it would have to be after hours because they're all volunteers, to make sure that they understand as a member of a commission what their responsibilities are as it relates to conflict of interests, open meeting law, and ethics in general. And I think before we can create a document of conduct rules, we maybe should start there, that if an individual has an interest in being on a board, then those are pretty simple prerequisites that should take place within, say, the first 90 days of their participation on a board. And then concurrently, a document could be hammered out, which could parallel this for the, pretty much the most part. And perhaps the MMA, because we didn't look at this piece in our study, may have some parameters of best practice for boards and commissions. So I would agree with Connor and Marilyn that this, we should hang our hats on the code of conduct first and then look to how do we stabilize the expectations for our, of behavior and communication for our boards and commissions.
Hey, I'm listening to everybody here. I'd like to add one other piece, especially sitting in capacity of president right now. I believe it would be a useful tool for those chairing committees to be able to decide whether one's out of order or not. So it certainly could help, again, anyone chairing a committee for the various committees we have. But it starts with the council and I understand what the objective is tonight. And seeing that we're looking for a vote, I would ask, would somebody want to praise the motion for to continue on with discussion followed by a vote this evening? Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. I move that we approve the Council Code of Conduct as presented this evening as Rule 15 in our council rules.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor now. Any further discussion? Are you seeing none? I'll start up in the fourth of the three, Don Anderson?
Yes.
I think, yeah, Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Sid?
Respectfully, no.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you, Ralph. All called voted. That concludes the second agenda item and our final agenda item this evening is adjournment. For the record, we will be meeting one week from tonight. Ralph and Marilyn and rest are hopeful towards for that meeting. And it is 6:42, so motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? None? Ralph?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Don Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, all. At 6:42, we're adjourned and we'll see you in a week.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.